It's seven ten, I'd like to call the CBU School Board meeting to order. Do I have a, do we have to do a motion to open this thing? Yes, no? Okay. The adjustments to the agenda, I am adding a five point one point one, which is the Student Council Report. And I think that's it. Yes?
This is weird, but I'd like to remove the minutes for April fourteenth. Seven point three from the consent agenda. A correction.
Seven point three?
No, I know, I probably didn't say that right.
You mean eight point one point one?
Yeah, yeah, I had the wrong number.
Why do you want them removed?
Because the reporting of the voting for the trip.
I know.
Was not accurate, so I thought that it should be accurate.
Just sort of the action, make it seven point five. Remove it from the consent agenda.
Okay, so we are removing eight point one point one from the consent agenda, and we are adding it to seven point five to the, to the action matter, so we'll have a discussion about the minutes from the Galapagos trip.
Okay.
All righty. Okay, and before we start our presentations, do we have any audience in communications?
I guess I would like to say something, I know Jeff is gonna say something as well, so maybe between the two of us.
Sure.
We can, we both had students who went to CBU graduate from UVM.
This past weekend.
On Sunday. And we were just talking right before this, we were both struck while we were at graduation exercises, at just how well CBU grads dominated in the reception of awards at UVM, so.
Right, I wanted to mention Luke Dorfman, who was CBU class of eleven and graduated on, on Sunday. He was a dual English and anthropology major with a minor in mathematics, so he took an easy course, look. And he graduated from UVM this past weekend as summa cum laude Phi Beta Kappa. He's attending Harvard as a master's student in education and policy management, starting this fall. He has a summer award for a job this summer, working as an intern. He also won a number of prizes, including the Hannah Howard Prize for Outstanding Academic Performance, and we could go on and on. Quite a, one of the most recognized students at Arts of Sciences graduation on Sunday.
And Ben Teasdale, do you remember him? So I, it's my understanding that he won sort of the overall best student award at UVM, which is really for the, the overall university. And there were many other CBU students that really did very well, graduating with honors or receiving other awards, so.
Nice.
There's an article that comes out that showcases that.
Thank you. Thank you all that. Okay, before we go to our presentations, I would just like to let the board know that this is Marilyn's last board meeting. She is moving to Burlington, which then makes her ineligible to be on the school board anymore, and she'll be moving in the fall, or September-ish.
Yeah.
And as an appreciation from the board, I would like to present you this gift.
Thank you.
And it's from not only the board, it's from the CSU, it's from everybody.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Marilyn.
Do I get to open it up?
And we really appreciate all the work you did for the board.
Thank you so much. Well, thank you everyone, it's been a pleasure being on the board. I've really enjoyed it, now I'm gonna be a city woman, so hey.
They have, they have a school board too. Okay, and next I'd like to go on to our presentations, and as I remember from previous years, this is always a fun time, a presentation from our international students.
Yes, we have a great group, come on up.
Well, I'd like to say, my name is Jan Bedar, I work with EF High School Exchange Year, and this is my twenty-second year having students at CBU. I'm working on my grandkids' contacts now, so. Anyway, first thing I'd like to do is to introduce Kelly.
Kelly Cartelaro from PAX, the Program of Academic Exchange. Thanks so much.
And I think what we'll do is we'll kind of just go right down through, and have the kids, you know, say who they are, where they're staying, where are you from, where are you from?
All right, so should I start?
Yes.
Okay, so, hi everybody, my name is Filippo, and I come from Italy. Right now I live in Shelburne with Susan and my family. My year here has been what I was looking for, and definitely more, much more. So if we're talking about the academic part, my academic knowledge on the American aspect comes from, or came from, what I've seen in movies and cartoons. Because, yeah, since I was young, I heard and saw so many lockers in the, in those American schools, it was so interesting, and so different from what I used to have in my Italian schools. Then I came here, and what I saw was actually true, and so I was really glad about that. I was even more glad about the environment that has been here in CBU. This environment where you can feel free, and especially whatever you like to do, you're gonna have your way to do that. It's something that I really appreciated, and something that I felt from most teachers is trust. I think trust can be the fuel for your engine, if you're a student. Feeling someone who believes in you, and knows that you can do well, is something that should be in every school, and here I felt so much, and so really my year here has been so important, and I got so much, and I'm sure I'm gonna always learn from what I got from here.
Nice.
All right, so my name is Johan, I'm an exchange student from Sweden, I've been living in Heinsberg for the last couple of nine months, I think, with Kalani Thomas and her family. And so I came here to see if it was as bad as people said at home. I can tell you, the people at home were wrong. I don't know what to say, it's been a great experience, and I like to say that CBU has one of the greatest school spirits, at least in comparison to my school at home. It's been very great, and a good experience to be here.
Okay, hello everyone, so my name is Oscar, and I'm from Norway, and I gotta say that I've been loving to be a part of this CBU community, and it's been extremely great, and, you know, it's probably been everything that I wanted to experience, and a lot of stuff that I experienced, which I didn't even know existed, which I now figure is true, and it's been a great adventure for me, and, you know, it's just been pretty awesome to be here at CBU, and been enjoying every second, and it's just given me so many new life aspects, and new friends, and people from, like, all over the world, as you can see here, and so both, like, friends from all over the world, as well as American friends, and it's just been great, and now I can finally speak proper English. Oh, and I'm also from Williston, that's at least where I live, it's called Renamenoid, so it's pretty much all about me.
Hi, my name is Sarah, and I'm from Spain, and I'm living with the Williamson, Saint Chaplart. I really like to be here, because it's really different from my school in Spain. There's a lot of people, and you actually make friendships with people of other ages, but it's really nice. And there's a lot of school spirit, because in my school, there's like nothing of school spirit. And I have been having a really good time here. And I came here because my older siblings came to, to CBU, and they love it, and they told me you are going to have a great year, so I really like it.
Hi everyone, my name is Roudin, and I come from Italy, and I'm staying in Williston with the Jennings. So when I decided to do a year abroad, I didn't really know what was, what was I gonna go against, but when I finally got to CBU, I found a community that, with open arms, I found teachers that would just help me so much, and would understand the situation. I took an economics class for a semester, and I recognized how hard it is, I just, I was like completely new work, completely like new language, and I, but I got in, I got just like through it, and I, I'm so thankful for not just economics, but that was just an example for every single class I took, it was just, I just felt that it was not as hard, and I actually got through every single one of the classes. Not just that, but, I don't know, from the beginning, I decided to join Student Council, to just do my best to be part of the community, and just, just be out there, and let, let people know who I am, and let them know who they are to me. I decided to do Grad Challenge, and so, so I will have, I have two diplomas, so I don't know, I think this year has been like, I learned all that I could have done, and I, I think the CBU has opened many doors for me, and I just think it's awesome, so thank you so much.
So my name is Anne Sophie, I am also an exchange student from Norway, and I can only say, I started out with a not-so-good experience, but after coming here to Vermont, that definitely changed since, mostly because of the school. CBU is absolutely amazing, it's a wonderful school with great people, especially the teachers, I really want to be with a lot of the teachers, and you have so many options when it comes to the subjects, and what you can do. And I find it really, like, the system here is just great, especially having the Learning Center, where you're able to go and study whenever you want, the teachers are able to help you always. We don't have that in Norway, and I find that amazing to have that here. Also, the students are very nice. I am currently living with Jan, she's a coordinator of EF, but I just recently found a family, which is in South Burlington, and I'm very looking forward to that, yeah.
Hello everyone, my name is Katja, I'm an exchange student from Germany, and I live with a Calauro family in Heinsberg, and yeah, CBU was really, really great. Like, the first day I was here, and I saw all the, I don't know, classes you can take, I was really amazed, you can take photography, and acting, and public speaking, and you can't take any, you can't take any of that in Germany, and I thought it was really cool. Also, like they said, the school spirit, in Germany you're basically just going to school, you learn, and you go back home, but here you actually, you have sports, you have clubs, it really like gets the students together, and I really liked it.
Hi, my name is Juan, I'm from Venezuela, and I'm living with a Lang family, there's my most brother, so the first time, the first time when Kelly told me I'm going to Vermont, I remember my reaction, that was, I thought I was Canada. And then I looked at him, I said, oh okay, it's not Canada. Well, I was close. And, yeah, if you ask me what most you like about CBU, about this experience, I think students, the teachers and staff members, because that was absolutely different from my country, they really care about you, they really care how you feel, so that was really awesome. The building is amazing, the fields, everything here is absolutely different for me, and really amazing, and I think I'm talking, I'm talking for everyone here, I want to say thank you to everyone here.
Thank you. Very well. I have to admit, this is the first group that didn't talk about all the sports here. Did anyone do sports?
Yeah.
Okay. That was always the number one comment of all the sports we have here.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Well, how about other things besides sports? Did any of you do photography club, or acting, or other activities?
I took women's chorus for a semester, and I've been taking singing lessons for five years myself, so I found that really interesting. I have a teacher called Rachel, he was, he's amazing. I take now, since I didn't continue that, the second semester, I, I take private lessons with him now, and that he takes the time to actually do that. I find that amazing. He does it between lunch, and he actually, I really appreciate that he takes the time to teach me, and to help me with that. I would never do that in Norway.
I'm taking acting, beginning acting and public speaking right now, and it's a lot of fun. It's like, the other classes, you just sit like at a table, and you just learn. And, yeah, acting and public speaking, you actually get, get on the stage, you warm up, you, Robin is really fun, and it's just really cool to experience.
Yeah, I take a pool speaking also, yeah, Robin, she's gracing the best way possible. Absolutely, she's really great as a teacher, yeah, I really love her.
Are there any other questions, Joan?
I just give you guys a lot of credit, because there are stories, or, you know, what you imagine it to be, but you're young, and you come and move into another family, and another culture, and, and I think it takes a lot of guts, and I've always been impressed, and I know our coordinators do a good job, but I think it falls on, on you all as individuals to make the most of this, and I give you a lot of credit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'd like to close by thanking Jan and Kelly, and all of our host families, and as much as you heard about the impacts CBU's had on them, you've all had a great impact on our students as well, really positive impact, and we thank you, and good luck.
If I could just say one thing, I'm sorry, our student that was here last year, Simona Rahi from Lebanon, has actually just received a full scholarship from the Daughters of the Revolution in Lebanon, and will be attending New College of Sarasota, I think, or some, a college in Sarasota on a full scholarship, and it's because of her experience here.
Wow. Thank you very much.
Okay, to our next presentation. See you later.
Yeah, no kidding. And what is a perfect segue, yeah, what a segue.
Mine's not gonna be nearly as exciting, because they've already graduated into, you guys did great.
So really, those of you who don't know, this is Joanna Shaw Daniels, RELL Coordinator, she's going to speak to us about our program here.
So I have been working on Grad Challenge presentations all week, so I should know what a good presentation works, looks like, but I rely heavily on my notes, so please don't deduct any points from the project, just because I don't want to forget anything. So, yeah, I'm teaching, I'm one of one and a half teachers for the high school who teach ELL here, I'm Joanna Shaw Daniels, and we really just wanted to update you on our program, give you some understanding of what ELL at CSSU looks like, and specifically CBU, and then also show who our students are, and some of the changing needs that are going on. This is our team, Anne is the other half, that she's presenting at Heinsberg right now, and the rest are, I, we're through all the schools. Patty on the end, and myself, we're the only full-time in one school, but there are six full-time teachers, and they're all shared, so we get shifted around as the need is, depending on the school. CSSU falls under the Director of Curriculum, so Jeff will be our supervisor next year, and that would be Molly this year. And this is kind of what has happened to C, the ELL numbers in CSSU. So I actually came on in two thousand and four, just after, I think the other teacher had been here two years before I did, and they needed a tutor, which quickly turned into a teaching job, and the numbers have just gradually, you know, increased, increased, increased. So it's a little different than the rest of the country, where most of the speakers are Spanish speakers. We rarely have Spanish speakers, once in a while, but our numbers are increasing. We're considered a low incidence school, and that just means that the proportion of the ELL students is quite small to the main population. So, so far, CSSU started at about fourteen students in two thousand and three, and we are up to a hundred and twenty-five, though that was the count in the fall, so I think the numbers have changed since then. This is CBU specifically, this is just the last five years. We're pretty steady. Like I said, when I started, I had two students in CBU, and then it quickly rose up, and then two thousand and nine, I had twenty-eight students. And at one point it peaked over thirty, but people moved fast. That's when Anne came on as a point five, so we could service the students, because not only did the students change, but, so the numbers kind of wiggle a little bit, but what happens is that the students were seeing shift, so when we had, like, before I would have people who could speak English, and they'd come in, but now we have more students who either don't speak English at all, or came from a refugee camp, and didn't have school up only until maybe eighth grade, and there might be a gap of four years since they've had school, so the whole population changes, and that changes the needs that we see. Ask a question? Sure. Just remind me, what, what makes a student fall into the ELL education category? Getting to that slide. I'm asking another question. Why don't, why isn't CBU a third of the other number? Could graduate out of ELL by the time they get here, or? Well, I think actually what, what has happened is part of that, yes, and most of the growth has been in the elementary schools, and that's where it's been happening so quickly. So they, they just haven't gotten to us yet, a lot of them. Our goal is that by the time they get to us, if they've been in the system that long, they won't need to be with us, but that's not always the case, sometimes they still do. There's, there's still a lot of reading difficulties often, or they're, they're just lagging behind a little, and a lot depends on the culture they came from. So it's hard to say, it's really so individualized, depending on which culture and their background. But let me see if the... Didn't we throw you off? No, that's okay, please, I even have a slide for questions, but I haven't gotten today. So this is, like I said, there was a little discrepancy, because we said there were a hundred and twenty-five at the beginning of the, the fall, but we started counting our students, and the team came up with about a hundred and thirty-seven, so there has been, a lot came in, ABS and Shelburne actually has the biggest growth. These are our current numbers, so this is how the numbers get broken down according to limited English proficiency, or non-English proficiency, and then monitored students are those students that have technically moved off our caseload, but they are still entitled to services for two years after they get moved off the caseload. And that actually is determined by the test that I'll talk to you about, that the state has to administer, the federal test, so we don't really decide who gets on and off. The countries in blue are where our students are from, just at CBU. So we have, I, I love the assortment, we're just getting more and more, I just love it when we get new students. And some of our students don't just speak another language, they might speak two, three, seven, depending where they're from. These are the backgrounds, these are often, these are our terms that we use for different types of our new, or students that come into the country, so we have all of these at CSSU, all different types, asylees. SLEIF means that they had limited or interrupted formal education, and we have a number of students that fall in there. This is the slide you were asking about. So there's a standardized process across the SU for determining the eligibility of the English language support services, and that's required, yeah, it's required by state and federal guidelines, so we don't even set those, we just follow the guidelines. And the first test, the first step is having a home language survey, that gets sent home to every student, and if anything other than English shows up, then it goes through the ELL teacher to determine if it should be pursued, or the student needs testing or Our annual test is the WEDA access test, and I just kind of put this picture in, because this is how, this is how I think with pictures, but we have students anywhere from entering to, six means they're proficient with the native speakers that have been in the schools, or grade level, as they see, so we have students from all across. Often when you see students who are at fours and fives, they can almost be at the same level as other students in, like, the, the native students who might be just having difficulty, you know, some of those quote struggling students, they fit right into that, so it's kind of hard sometimes to see, but often it's a language piece that's holding them back a little bit. So just, I'm not gonna go into the whole thing on the language acquisition, but it might help to just understand that when we have BICs and CAL, we're talking about, this is the interpretive communicative, communicative language that we use, like, when you go to a country, and you just need to know where the bathroom is, or order something you want to eat, or buy something, that's that kind of communication, but if you have to get up and talk about a topic, or take a test, the academic language that comes in, that's where they get more, there's a lot more struggle, and it can take up to five to 10 years, according to the studies, to learn different, that type of language, depending on the level. So as you can imagine, as the content in the language gets more involved in high school, when you have a student that comes in, and they might be eighteen, but you place them as an eleventh grader, just to give them a chance to learn the language, so they can understand enough to acquire, and, and, you know, just get through the academic courses and the rigor we have here. CBU is a hard class. So this woman here, this young woman, she's sweet, she's presenting in front of the Holocaust class, and she came from the Somali Bantu community. She's been in the system since, I think, two thousand and four, yeah, and she did exit, but she still comes into my room, and I, you know, we've been working on Grad Challenge and everything with her, just to get out, even though she's in her second year of monitoring. So just to give you an idea, she still doesn't feel fluent, she's great, and she was accepted to like five different colleges, we were so excited for her, but she really does still need help, we still need to go through the reading and work on the content, so even though she's been here quite so long, it's, it's hard for her. Another piece we do is acculturation, so we just want to help them get familiar with the school. Just learning how to be at, in an American school is a huge growth. Most of the time they're in shock when they first get here, and I have to walk around, I've lost students before, I mean, they just wander, and you'll have to go find them, so it's, it's really a full-time job, sometimes just with one newcomer, it can really be hard. These are the different things we do as a teacher. Our role necessitates facilitating the home-school connection, so some families need support, and this is where I had to write it down. We're navigating college preparation, summer camps, vacation schedules, bus routes, DMV services, taxes, job applications, school lunch forms, evening assemblies, parent-teacher conferences, helping them get winter clothing, school supplies, and then there's the endless paperwork that is involved with all the offices and things. Often that includes connecting with interpreters, scheduling meetings, and we also do home visits. And this is, how do I do this? Nope. Oh, you have to actually go over there. So, okay. Okay. We just put a little clip together, so you could get an idea of some of our students. And I, I can't take credit for this. My colleague is the iPad whiz. She did this in, like, an afternoon really fast. I was impressed.
Hello, I'm Thazili, and I'm Siny.
Hey, my name is Ahmed, and I'm in tenth grade.
I'm in twelfth.
Hi, my name is Aik.
I'm from Maro.
I have two years and a half in America.
I went in the United States about five years.
I moved here two years ago.
I have been here eight months.
I'm from Congo. Do you kind of feel a little bit of a homos?
I come from Vietnam.
Six, seven, not much, but I know much Swahili language.
My homeland is Somali.
Oh, my hometown, well, it is Vietnamese.
It's nearly home, and sometimes I speak some language.
The hardest thing for me when I first started learning English was speaking English.
The hardest thing when I moved in America was to speak and writing. And sometimes, when I was friends, I couldn't, I could say it all. It was very, very sad for me, because I want to say something, and I can't, because they can't understand me.
Challenge, a speech analyst.
How long did I have when I moved here? When I started school at CBU, it was getting pretty much of kids that I never knew or never had class with.
The ELL class, I can say, is kind of, it kind of, man. Do you believe me? Because they did a lot of things for us. They helped out from prom, they helped out from other homewares, they helped us for the English class. So they've been a good help of my schooling session, and I'm so thankful for them.
They support me in so many ways. One of them is helping with classes, returning classes, finding, like, the teacher trying to say, you know, you know, kind of things.
One way that the ELL teachers support me is help me learn English, and help me practice with my reading, and help me practice with my writing, and sometimes, they also help me with my homework. And that's all.
Here, I'm program, help me understand the culture and English.
And that young woman there was just asked to speak at the convocation.
Yes, she was.
She's amazing. Just go to Lamb's.
Just go to Lamb's. Probably know her.
She's got a ton of her.
And I think these girls, when they get to the student council board, will mention her as well.
She's the friendliest person.
Beautiful voice.
She does.
They may get her to sing in the convocation.
I'm sure she would. So if you have any other questions?
How you, you know, supporting them at home? Where do you draw the line? I'm sure it's an endless amount of need that they need. Not that they need help, but that they're, you know, assimilating and getting stuff done in a different language.
It's a really hard line to walk, because there's so many things you have to take into consideration. And I mean, just some families, and, and what they're dealing with at home is so, can be so frustrating. So they, they rely so much on the community, and when... I had one student tell me once, and this is, I think, really specific to ELL teachers. He needed to get a car, and he said to me, he's, like, asking me all these questions. I'm like, I don't know anything about buying a car, and that's what my husband's for. He tells me what to get, or, you know, I just tell him what I like. But he's like, I need to go out, I need to find a car, and I don't know where to go. I don't know what to do. I don't know how to do this. And he's like, you're all I know. You're the only one I really trust. So, like, what do you do? You grab the baby, you get him in the car, and say, all right, let's go. And I guess it's just evaluating the need in the moment, and just doing what has to be done. I mean, we, Anne and I have both gone to homes for parent-teacher conferences, for the simple fact that the parents can't get here. It's just too complicated. They can't get here during the day. They have to work. And, and I really, I mean, we, we need to meet with those parents. They really want to know what's going on. So it's hard. So we just, you know, we want to know they get the basics. You're eating? You know, we hook them up with the social, social worker here, but what the social worker often says is, unless they are on a certain plan, or whatever, they don't qualify. Then we have the whole, well, can they go for refugee resettlement? No, they can't, because they might be in migrants, which means they went from one state to another, they've already gotten their refugee supports, so they, they just need a lot of help. So we just try and connect them into the community as much as we can. And it often means going home, just checking things out, being responsive. It's, it's hard. It's really is hard.
What's a typical day look like, I do, like, when they first get here? Are you with them one-on-one for the entire day, or a lot of the day, or cut them loose into the classrooms?
Usually, I am scrambling with the NHS tutors, because I want to meet up with some of the high school kids. I introduce them to the learning center. There's a lot of one-on-one, or just passing them off. Can you go sit here? Just watch. Just sit and watch, observe, because it's all, they're just taking in so much. So I, I try to get them in my room as much as possible. So if they're... And, and again, there is no typical. I can't speak of a typical. A typical for, for us is so, I can't think of it. If they don't speak any English, then they're with me, and they follow me around. And eventually, I just do what the direction center does, only at a much slower pace. So getting them into the high school can take a month, where I'm setting them up on the computer and everything, where an English speaker, it might take a day. It depends on the student. It depends on their background. It depends what, how much school they had when they came in. My Vietnamese students know how to get on computers and do that, no problem. My young woman, who came from an Ethiopian refugee camp, it was another story. So it's just so different from one student to the next.
Does anyone have any other questions?
We do have an interesting job. I love my job.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank Joanna and Anne, as well. They do a wonderful job with these students. They're not just their teachers, as you've seen, and their advocates. They're so much more than that. And they mean an awful lot to their students and their families, and to us. But they do a great job with these students.
Shall we move on to the principals' report?
Sure.
Five point one.
Sure. Just a few things I'd like to highlight. First of all, congratulations to our counseling program, which was recognized by the American School Counseling Association as a model program. And we are the first in Vermont to receive this distinction, even though there have been five hundred and fifty others across the country. I'd also like to mention, about two or three Fridays ago, very meaningful induction of Kevin Reel, our former activities director, into the VPA Hall of Fame. And about two weeks before that, he was the recipient of the Charles Pierce Athletic Director of the Year Award as well. And I'd also like to mention that this Friday is our Grad Challenge presentations. You are all welcome to join us. It's a fabulous day, one of my favorite. I'm sure Lisa's totally prepared to give hers. She might even practice for us in front, if we have some time tonight.
Oh.
Yes, we'd love to see you, if indeed it is possible. And then, on the list, and I'll transition into that, is I want to take this moment to thank three very special people for their contributions to CBU. The three teacher, faculty, faculty-staff members who are retiring this year. It's a really great blend and representation of life at CBU, because we've got a design tech teacher who has met the needs of so many diverse students. Just two doors down, you walk in there, and it's an entirely different experience. Chris Weatherhead, who has our receptionist for twenty-two years, and is the face of CBU. And Barb Lavis, who's worked in the clerical, and is one of those behind-the-scenes people, who is absolutely essential to the day-to-day operations of our building. So I want to thank all three of them for their very significant contributions to CBU over the years. They are thanked and will be missed.
Sorry, Jeff, who is the first?
Uh, the first is Dick Francis.
All right.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Absolutely.
And now, we are going to go to the student council report.
Okay. So to start off with, we had CAW, which was Kindness Awareness Week, last week, or two, two weeks ago now. And that was a big success. We had cafe appreciation, so we brought all the cafe members flowers, and a baby signed sign from all, from the majority of the students. We had post-it notes with compliments that we hung up in the hallways, so those are really morale boosters. And then, we also had the Dude Be Nice campaign, which supports LGBT rights, and brings awareness for that. And a part of the Dude Be Nice campaign was, we voted for nicest people at CBU. And the two winners were Fatheely, who is one of the ELL students, who is the nicest person at CBU. And then Chris Hood, who is a math teacher here at CBU.
And I know there were several other winners. Do you know?
I, I don't. I do know the two winners. I know a few other contenders, but I'm not, I don't want to go out on a limb, and I may be wrong.
Yeah, so that was just something that happened for the first time last year, and then we brought it back this year, and it was a big success.
Some other things that Student Council has been working on include Senior Service Day, which was last Thursday. So the, on that Thursday is, the juniors take their science kneecaps all day long, so the freshmen are at Model UN, which is at St. Michael's, and they're there for Thursday and Friday. And then, so we organized a service day for seniors to go off campus or stay on campus and do volunteer work. So they were at Catamount, Bolton. I volunteered at Model UN, and I proctored there. Some people, some students stayed on campus and cleaned up here. The sophomores, for the first time, several student council members organized a sophomore summit, or I'm not sure if that's what they called it, but... So they brought all the sophomores into the auditorium, and had fun speakers and performances, and it was really just a great way to have a big class bonding celebration.
Yep. And then, around the same time, a lot of the juniors had a bunch of this testing going on. So we had S-VACs, and then we, as well as, so juniors, seniors, and maybe some sophomores took the AP tests last week and the week before. And then juniors finished up with kneecaps for science on Thursday. And just like the overall consensus from the junior class was that it was a lot to take on in three short weeks. And so that's just something, something to think about for planning this test next year, whether S-VACs happen in the winter or fall. I'm not sure if that's a possibility, but just spreading them out, so it's not like S-VAC, AP, and then kneecaps. It was just overwhelming for many students across the board. Yeah, that was the overall feel for the weeks.
So on to seniors. It's been also a really busy time for seniors as well. May first was College Decision Day, so everybody let their college know. Again, like you mentioned, we have our Grad Challenge presentations this Friday, so we've had extended advisories yesterday and today to present our advisories and practice. We're all very excited for that. And also, we've started to prepare for graduation. So we've, there's a list of speakers for convocation and graduation, and Class Council has been really busy with that as well. Another thing that I wanted to mention, I'm part of Environmental Action Club, so next Wednesday, we're planning on having our annual Trash on the Lawn Day. We had planned it for back in the fall, but it kept raining, so we, we weren't able to do that. But it's a day where we have this huge tarp right outside of the cafeteria, and we dump, we save all the trash from one day, and kind of like dissect it. And it's really interesting. You can see, like, all the behavioral patterns of people, and it gives us, like, an idea of how well our trash sorting station's working, or what other areas of the school do we need to focus on. And then, going back in time a little bit, back to April vacation, there were a lot of trips going on. So there was the England Island, Wales trip, there was the Habitat for Humanity trip, and then I was on the Ireland International Business Trip. And so everybody came back with, from those trips with really great experiences. It was a lot of fun. Yes. Any questions?
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. Okay. On to five point two, the C-S-S-U D brief. And everyone has the COE report in their, in their packet. Does anyone have any questions on it? Do you want to talk about anything else? I think I might, the... Do you want to go with the rest? Anything else to happen? On the COE. Yes, the C-S-S-U D brief. Yeah, sure. I mean, I guess that the, the most important thing we talked about is the legislative... What do you call it? Bill? That was, that was passed? Yeah. H three sixty-one. Three sixty-one. And I'm not going to do it justice, because I don't have that much information in front of me, but everyone should have gotten the, the brief from the SBA. The two-page brief is actually pretty helpful. The C-S-S, well, there's two, there's two main components. One is the governance issues, which certainly, at the very least, will encourage us to have another conversation about, about consolidating into a single district from an SU. And there's various tax incentives to do it more quickly, rather than slowly. But those are really, you know, we have the, the outline of the law in front of us, the SBA comes out with sort of their interpretation of it probably later this week, so we don't have all the information. So that will be, though, for your planning purposes. If you don't usually come to the C-S-S-U board meeting, you may want to try to attend it this year, because, the C-S-S-U retreat, because that will be probably the majority of our discussion. And it's, it's a big step to become a, a single district instead of an SU, and we're going to have to have a lot of voices at the table about discussing how we move forward on that initiative. The other, the other big piece of that bill is the sort of graduated caps, I would almost call it. It's a sort of a sliding scale on what school boards are allowed to go up on their per-people spending year to year, depending on where they are starting, you know, if they're sort of below, or where they are on the scale of, of how much you're spending per student. If you're at the low end, you can spend more. If you're at the high end, you can spend nothing. It's going to be very challenging. Apparently, in Vermont Digger, they've got the, I was looking for the table that shows the numbers. Williston, the Williston Board members were saying that they were at two point three percent, and I think that they're roughly equivalent to our per-people spending. So we're going to have a lot of work to do, I think, if we're going to have to deal with that. But I don't know that number. I just, like I said, it's just something we have, we'll have to look at. So that's probably the more immediate one, because that'll come up, like, in the fall very quickly. And then, the, the governance issue will be something we'll have to discuss, you know, a little bit longer term. Does anybody else know more about it? They'd like to chime in, anything important they've heard? So that's probably the, the most, that was, took a significant amount of our time. The other thing, though, I do want to mention is that Megan gave a little presentation on special ed consolidation. When we, when we consolidated special ed, the different, all, all the different schools had different implementations, none better or worse than others, just different implementations. Clearly, by consolidating, you'd want to, one reason to consolidate is to make sure you're using best practices. And so the board, the C-S-S-U board, was very interested in how is Megan going to work that with all the professionals who now report at SU level? So she gave a little update on that. It does have, you know, not only implications for students and for staff, but it also has implication, budget implications, right? So, because now it's all consolidated, if there was a, a school that, and I don't even know this, but if it was a school that's, that's spending more money to accomplish a task, and somebody's spending less money to accomplish a task, it's really not fair now that we're just dividing it by students. You know, we really should find the best way to do it and be consistent, to be fair to our communities. So, but that's not going to be a short-term thing. So she would, she kind of took us through how they're accomplishing that. And other than the fact that C-S-S-U gets to buy the buses nowadays, which is, makes me really happy to be on the SU board, because buying buses is my favorite thing. Like, actually accomplish, I don't know buses I've, I've voted on in the last year.
For this year, thank you.
The other thing I found in...
The other thing I found interesting is, is that the CSSU votes on all of the nominated candidates for special ed. It's, they don't do it at the local board anymore.
Right. But, I mean, Jeff, you correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is they don't come to the SU Board until the local administration is, is, supports the.
Correct.
Because if you notice, is it, some of the people were approving tonight, or no, we did them in the, the CSSU level, right? Never mind.
Thank you, very good, very good meeting. And then if you missed it, Art Sinocia, who's an education lawyer, spoke at the Common Topic, he's a phenomenal speaker. So much, you know, I have to give him a lot of credit, he came totally prepared. You know, I know a lot, a lot of lawyers who could just come and say, well, what do you guys want to talk about? And be fascinating, but he really came prepared with some topics that we needed to know about, and it was a, it was a really good forty-five minutes to spend with him.
I noticed that the substitute pay rate that we discussed at CSSU is not on the CVU.
Right, actually that was.
And I would think it should be also. Did we add money to substitute pay, they asked you in our budget?
That's actually a really good question, I remember that Cindy did mention that, because we were supposed to talk about it now if we wanted to talk about it, because it wasn't on the other agendas.
But it's going to be an action matter in our next meeting, is it just an action matter at the?
I would think, I would think that's everyone's action.
Yeah, we talked about it.
So if you didn't, so that was not in our packet, I guess, so, that's a good point, we should make, we should remind Elaine, we should. So Cindy, if you look in the SU agenda materials, there's a two-page thing in there from Cindy where essentially she's recommending that we raise the pay for our substitute teachers to be more in line with surrounding districts. So it's, it's not just, we want to be nice to substitutes, it's a matter of we're having, starting to have real trouble getting substitutes and getting quality substitutes, because they can make ten dollars more an hour if they go to Chitteneese, so.
And we were told to ask our local principals, is it hard to get substitutes here?
We do pretty well, I think, compared to some of the other schools in our district, from what I've heard from conversations, but it is indeed a challenge every year, absolutely.
And we added money to their budget, because we had been under-budgeting or under-funding.
Some boards did, some boards have not.
Well, we did here at CVU.
Right, we did, correct.
And it's always a good thing to do, and why wouldn't you want to do that, but unfortunately, as we started out talking, if we have a 2% number, we have to get under, is that where we want to spend limited resources, so. But on the other hand, Cindy did mention that a half a percent on that, half a percent? Oh, no, that was the other one.
That's the topic.
Yeah, anyways, it is, it is a number, though, I'm sure that it's not going to be a huge hit to the budget, but it's, every little bit hurts, so. Meaty meeting tonight, there's a lot to talk about.
So, are you done on the CSU?
I'm done on that one.
Okay, okay, now we're going to go to the third quarter financial management report.
Me?
Slash Facilities Committee, because that was one committee now.
Yeah, so I was going to start by saying that, so we did combine the committees, but they're still listed as two reports, so I'll segue from one to the other. FMR, revenues down a little bit from about twelve thousand dollars from the last time we looked, it was special ed-related, partially offset by an increase in tuition from folks from, kids from.
St. George and other areas.
St. George and other areas, thank you. Spending were worse by about forty K. This always happens when your, our special ed revenues went down because our special ed spending went down, because they, at least, they're not exactly the same, but they're in line. And then we had some increase, if you're looking at it, some payments for earned vacation to exiting employees, that we true up with folks as they leave, but we don't name who they are, in the office of the principal. And, you know, you're not the only one leaving.
I'm not the only one leaving, correct.
But those two things actually kind of netted out, what's, what really is, made us forty thousand dollars worse is that we took, into the forecast for the budget now is our anticipated shortfall in food services, which is thirty-eight thousand dollars, so we had to put that in, and that's really almost exactly what we, so. Ongoing discussions on that is not something that's going to go away, it's, you know, our new, it's our new reality, and we'll have to have some discussions about how to fix that or not going forward. I mean, there is a way of, you could say it's not a bad investment of money to feed kids either, so, so that's where we kind of ended up.
Yes, and my understanding then is that, just looking at our regular budget, we're one hundred and thirty-eight thousand on the good side, and also our fund balance is two hundred and eighty thousand, about two seventy-nine.
Right, so you can add those together.
Right.
Right. Numbers, you're getting to be the right numbers person.
Yeah.
Actually, I was going to mention that this is, putting this fund balance update on here, Bob, is really helpful, so, so remember that we have to add our surplus. So was, was the, was the wrap-up, is that even though we had bad news on both revenue and spending, we still are, one hundred and thirty-eight ahead of budget, so, so we're in good shape there.
Four hundred thousand dollars.
The other thing which segues into the facilities report is the last page probably, I assume, is the construction fund. And right now we have a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollar, we'll probably end up the year with a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars in the construction fund and that, and on top of that, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the field improvement. So we're in quite decent shape on the construction fund. So, any questions on the finances? So, the, we moved from there to what we're going to do on the facilities, with the facilities, kind of a, I guess four things. One is Kurt is in pretty good shape on his project list, so no surprises that we have to anticipate quickly before the end of the year, or we're going to have to add in, so no, so he's in good shape there. We really have three things we're trying to face, one is paving of the parking lot, which, you know, we think is, right now, we have it kind of phased in as a hundred thousand dollars a year over three years, so three hundred thousand dollars, so one, one, one. The other is the fields, either a short or a long-term decision on what to do with our fields. So on the paving, given the surplus, or given the balance that we have in the construction fund, the committee asked Bob and Kurt to go and say, does it make sense to really do the parking lot in three chunks, or could we save money by doing more of it at once? So you went off and are having conversations with?
Yeah, we, we met with Kevin Warden, who's your school civil engineer, Engineering Ventures, to kind of enlist his assistance in kind of answering the question, if the board is in better shape at this point in time, looking into the summer, than they might have been six months ago or a year ago, is there something that Kurt should be recommending for you to do this summer? So we walked the parking lots, and Kevin's working on the details right, right now, but likely he'll recommend pulling away a part of the structural work that needs to be done in the front parking lot, and we'll look to have you approve getting that done this summer, so that if your favorable performance continues year after year, you'll be able to move that project in from three years, starting next year, to three years, starting this year. So we're working on a recommendation, you'll probably be asked to approve a contract award at some point in time between now and when summer begins in that arena.
Summer's already begun, hasn't it?
Not in the school world.
So Bob, I do have a question, is it just to do part, are we just looking at part or the full thing, or is it still in the?
Yes, good question. The focus right now, from Kurt's perspective, is the front parking lot is in the toughest shape and needs to be addressed more quickly than the back parking lot. So that's the focus of our walk-around, it was on that side of the building, not this side of the building.
What, Kim, you didn't notice?
Is it really that bad? I didn't notice, I don't see large potholes yet.
Next time we go on the walk-around, I'll have you walk with me.
The intersection between CVU Road and Mechanicsville Road.
Is much more shit.
Right in the middle of the intersection. You can't possibly get around.
The highlights of the tour would be going out the front entrance where Chris works, and just walk along that curb going that way, the curb, the pavement just off of the curb is about four inches lower than everywhere else.
That I've noticed.
And then if you look at the light pole string going down the driveway, the light poles in progressive order are successively lower in the ground than they were designed to be, such that about every four weeks, one of them sinks and it cuts off all the lights in the building. And then, if you want to understand where the culverts are, that have all the conduit between lights.
You had to ask him.
Come out someday when the parking lot's empty, and I tell you, you will know exactly where all the culverts are, because there's dips where they were all put in. So there's, there's some work. And rather than just repave it and put all the dips with an additional paving, and we fix some of that stuff.
Right, because that's stuff that needs to get fixed every, because I know they seem to repave it, this is that actual fix it and not just repave it.
This, if we do this work, then the repaving will last us like five more years longer than it would have if we just, if you and I might do at home, just kind of cover it over. Hope it settles, as we say. Never mind, car's going over here. Okay, now you're an expert.
No, I can answer some questions. So two things on the fields, one, we are looking for a little information on, one is the, the first is that we've asked Bob to go ahead on, if you remember way back, we talked about fields and that there, we're talking about a significant, you know, resurfacing of the fields costs a lot of money, but there's a less dramatic, which I can't remember the term for it, Kurt always reminds me what it is, but essentially just putting in new surface drainage and not having to tear the whole thing up, it costs around seventy thousand dollars a piece, and that we've asked Bob to go ahead and get that bid out, it'll come to the board to approve the bid, but we've asked him to go and get the bid.
And the money would come out of the construction fund.
Right.
Yes.
Out of the hundred and twenty that we have set aside for fields.
The idea is to just see how it would perform.
Right.
And if it's a fix.
And to get a better field.
And to choose one first, and then see if we want to do the others later.
So that leads to the other piece of it, which is how to move forward on the rest of the fields, and we've had some interesting offers from people who said, you know, I know how, a lot of people coming out of the woodwork with solutions on natural grass, and community members wanting to share how they drain their farm fields, to people who are in the profession for like golf courses, and people who are in the profession but are very anti-golf course, you know, attempts, and so what we're considering, and I'd like some input on, if anyone has an opinion, is, you know, is this something that we really should go boldly out to the community and say, we are interested in a community conversation around possible solutions, natural grass solutions? We've certainly been out to the public enough on the artificial turf, there may or may not be anything out there, but at least we could be quite clear with the community that we're very open to the best solution out there on natural grass, so.
I think that's a great idea.
So these solutions, they're different from the one we're trying for the seventy thousand?
Yes, yes, yes.
Is that in the next level up?
The next level, so the next level up is you take, you know, a foot and a half of the clay out and you put, and you replace it with sand, right? This one that we're talking about now doesn't do that, it just lays drainage in the clay. So, you know, we know that's not a complete fix, it's something, but it's not a complete fix. And I'm not saying that, I'm not trying to commit the board to a million and a half dollar, it may be a good, a good enough fix, we may choose, the board may choose that, but we don't know yet. So that would be one solution, just do that with all the fields and, you know, borrow other fields when our fields get bad. But there might be something else out there, I just, I just kind of feel like we've spent a lot of time and energy talking to the community about artificial turf, and we should give the alternative a public hearing about it, so, that's what we're kind of kicking around as an idea. Wouldn't be short-term, probably be something that we maybe in the fall.
Evolves into the fall, yeah.
There was a discussion that we had, was it in March, about that company, and I believe it's called The Loop Company, that was willing to do a free survey for us, and there was a lot of negative discussion about what, like what were their alternative motives and so forth and so on. I don't know if this is something that the board wants to consider at this time, to take them up on their offer, I know that, you know, the only thing is, is that we were, we would need a small group of people to contact them and meet with them, and I don't know if it's like the Communications Committee might want to meet with them, or another group. Nope, yep. I actually have the original email that the man sent, I believe he sent it orig, did he send it originally to you or to Shep?
I was thinking it was to Shep who forwarded it to me.
Right, so if you want to take a look at what he has to offer, this is all I have.
Is this something we would vote on now, anyway? I mean, I don't feel, I feel like.
No, I think, I want people to take a look at this, and maybe we'll just.
I don't know if it so much needs a vote, has anybody talked to these guys? I thought we were going to try to get somebody to.
Or is it something, you know, and this is, I'm throwing it out, is this something that maybe, you know, when Shep takes over as the AD, is it something that maybe, you know, he can look at, make a recommendation? I know that his first recommendation is, yeah, it looks, seems like a no-brainer to me, but.
I think you can work with the Facilities Committee and have a discussion about who is that group that sits and meets with them, and it could just be him. Yes, I think that's a possibility.
Okay. I mean, I'd be happy to help once the board chooses to go forward, but there seem to be some real concerns, Leah and Kim, you guys both had real concerns about motivation and all that kind of stuff, and I'm not comfortable having that conversation with them, I think. I think he's trying to do us a favor, I can't ask him your questions, because I don't understand your concerns, so, you know, that's what I would like, is that if there are some people who would be interested in having a conversation around what he's actually offering, then I'm more than happy to help with what we want to ask.
If, if the board's willing, Shep and his new job and I could kind of take it on to get enough information that you're more informed to have a conversation than you are at the present time, and not over-represent what you want to do or not want to do, just what, kind of what are the details and how does it fit, and how does it fit with the process you've just outlined that you're going forward?
Since they also do pro-bone work, for example, and then they get some examples, that doesn't mean they would be doing pro-bone work for us, though.
Right.
It says in the charge, it says like down there.
Yeah, the key is someone really needs to talk to them and get a whole lot more information.
Well, I think we need to talk, yeah, I think we need to talk about whether we want it to be us or somebody else, because I think that we've had a little problem being arms, you know, being in a weird position with the other, you know, as we worked on the artificial turf field, I think the direct, you know, board-hander discussion or something with the public, I think, is a more honest, not honest, but it's a more in-touch way to deal with this issue. I think we have been kind of, we've looked at, been looked at as passive by some members of the community on this topic, and so I think us being more active about it is one of the things that I think about, and so handing it off to somebody else doesn't feel as active as I might like it to be, that's one of my concerns.
Yeah, I think the issue, though, Leah, is that putting a survey together is a real science, you know, to ask questions that aren't leading, and I think my, if that's all they're offering to do, that's what I would like to take, which shouldn't be coming from some other company, I agree, but it would certainly be helpful to have somebody else help us, because I don't know anything about writing a survey.
I think we need to know what the intention is, because if we're really, you know, when you were first describing it, you were talking about, talking to the community about other ideas, way to manage fields. That sounds like an open discussion where you put out a call and you say, here we are, we're going to be here, and if you have some ideas, come and talk to us, that's very different than, than a survey.
Absolutely, yeah, exactly.
So I think we have to understand what the purpose is of the different approaches we're going to take and be systematic about it, we've not been successful in our past several years of working on this topic, so, I think we just need to be really mindful of the way that happens.
So perhaps Leah ought to work with you and Shep.
Really such a low on my list of things to work on, but.
That was a jump.
I'm sure it was.
Okay, do we have any other committee reports?
Can we move on to discussion matters? And there are five policies in front of us?
You know what, Mom, I'm sorry, I think this can come into committee, it's not on here at all, but, but the end of the year, we have a last faculty meeting, and that's the time that the board gives recognition awards for faculty and staff that are ten years, fifteen years, every five years, and from there, ten years up. And we don't have the date yet, but it's the last week before the graduation date of Friday, the 12th. And Jeff, Sue, somebody, I can get that to you when we have it, I'm working on the gifts, don't listen. Okay. I'm working on the gifts that the board gives to that group, and, and, so when we know the date, it, it's always a really nice recognition.
And there's ice cream cake, or ice cream-
And we, we have, and the past.
Are we allowed to do that?
So Joan, you're just saying that you just need to get the date from Jeff, and you're working on the gifts, and then we'll put out an email saying that-
Yes, to please come, whoever can. It's usually like one thirty or something.
It'll be either Tuesday or Thursday of that week, we've just got to confirm.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I realize it could be a committee of one.
She's her own committee, she and Sue.
Not even, I don't mean one me, I mean Sue, Jeff.
Okay, so we can, does anyone have any discussion on the five policies that have been put forth to us?
I was curious about the wellness one, do we have a wellness committee for CBU?
I think you have to have a wellness.
That's what, that's the way it read, I just didn't know.
We do, we do.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact. We do.
Well, then I guess my only, uh, I just noticed that I think we tried really hard, the end of that wellness committee one said the superintendent will report annually on the, and we've been trying really hard to not just have these sort of random reports that we're responsible for, but tie it in with something, so, I know, it's just, it's just a comment, so usually we don't have just, you know, she just sends out a report to the- We don't, there's, there's something on the, on the, on that says like the superintendent will annually report on the-
It was the curriculum.
Well, it's on the wellness one, too.
Yeah.
And wellness.
The superintendent or his or her designees shall report at least annually to the board and to the public on the district's compliance with laws and policies related to student wellness. I just think we've been trying really hard not to have sort of these, the superintendent will report, you know, just a comment for your discussion.
Question, noted. I'll bring that up.
Any other comments on these policies? Nope. Okay, six point two, retreat planning. There are a number of topics that have been bounced around for our annual retreat that's on June first, starting at maybe eight AM. Does anyone have any ideas that you would like to cover on this retreat? I'm trying to find my notes from-
There were a million things at CSSU level.
I know that in the cult report, um, that's on five point two, uh, the board chairs got together, and we talked about reviewing last year's retreat recommendations. I think some of these are going to be done at the CSSU level, if I'm not correct.
You are correct.
Jeff, do you have any ideas on that?
Well, I mean, I know from my experience from last year and the previous years, we like to give you sort of a status in terms of where we are with professional development and some of the primary goals and work ahead of us for the next year, particularly since this is a transition year. Between principals, I think that would be useful. That does not have to occupy a large space of time.
We were also going to talk about PLPs.
Yep, we can definitely do that.
Yeah, I think as far as just where we are in the implementation and what's coming next, especially what's coming next, that really comes handy.
Okay, yep.
October, November, you have to have them all in, PLPs for night graders?
Yes, yes.
What's PBGR?
Proficiency-based graduation requirements, I wrote it down.
Proficiency-based graduation requirements, that's right. And that will be, that would be part of where we are, where we're going.
Yeah, and they have where, where we are, where we're going, and maybe some talk about what's happening in the budget and why the budget's going to be challenging up next year? Yes, Lorna?
I was just thinking about the comment from Lisa and Lucy, I would like, this might not be the time, but some idea of how the testing went?
Mm-hmm.
And the challenges and, you know, of doing that.
I can give an update on that.
Last time we talked about PLPs, I think it was a presentation where the measures of success were kind of fuzzy. Maybe we could brainstorm ways to come up with measures of success.
And there are critical components that have to exist in the PLPs, and we can cover that and try to connect the two, because I think that crosses over into measures of success to some degree.
Yeah, the budget, you know, I could, the board wants, I'm happy to try to put some numbers together, give us an idea of what it's going to look like, with Bob's help, of course, but, um, one, one thing we need to discuss or think about is how, what work we want to do between June and, you know, December? Because it seems like it'd be great if we could get some, um, it, it, it's going to be, we're going to have to make some really hard decisions, and it's hard to, to tell Adam, you know, the last week of November, we need to cut, you know, four hundred thousand dollars, come back with ideas next week. You know, that's not something that could be casually be done, and so, but, but I also know that you don't want to spend, I mean, I know personally I'm not interested, I love numbers, and I don't want to spend all year working on the budget, you know? So it's, it's kind of a balance to, to figure out, do we have a plan to, to approach it, and give Adam some time to think about it?
Though, we could start earlier than we start, and you know, I hate to do that, too.
I hate to do that, too.
Yeah, but- But start, us starting earlier backs Bob and, and his team up, and, and a lot of that makes it very rushed, I would say.
Yeah, we already start next, next week.
Yeah, yeah.
With your, with, with Jeff's staff, so.
I, I think our process with, with, from your end, getting your departments and your, your folks on board and, and talking about what is necessary. I, I think a budget process could benefit from a new approach, but there are some key things that the process is, is there. I mean, if we did it top-down, board-down, I don't know if that's what you're saying, but that doesn't feel like, I certainly don't have the ins and outs of all the, the groundwork that has to be done.
Well, I kind of agree with you, because I know that there was, one of our budget buddies was like, was recommending we do a bottoms-up budget, which would be a nightmare, I think, it would be very difficult. But there's also, if at some point we're going to need to make a decision between do we start cutting languages or raising class sizes, you know, it would be good to have those, those kind of options fleshed out for the board in November, rather than starting to think about them in November.
Yeah, but I think you've touched on the way for the board to get at that, I think, I think it starts with, uh, with a bit of spin, taking a look at what you'd forecast your January conversations going to look like. Because if it, if it truly, if, if the, the burden of caps in their current configuration is as ominous as someone from Williston might think they are, it's important you know that early on, in that you give Jeff and I an opportunity to help, you know, inform your conversation, rather than getting all the way to January and going, oh, shoot.
That's no good.
Uh, and that be the first time you lean over to Adam and go, you know, we got to figure out a way to take a half a million out of here. We, we don't do good work with that kind of a schedule. So I think it starts to your point with, it's as best as we can, kind of what's it look like? What's this gonna unfold like, how much pressure will come from implementation of the new law? And, and then, and then to the extent you can, in September or, or thereabouts, give Adam and I kind of a direction on some things you want to add to the workload between then and January, that's far better than waiting till January to tell if you want to shift gears. So why, I, I think you give that a shot. But it starts with taking the law and giving you an idea of what it might look like in January for you in particular, and schools in general.
Right, well, I, I think that, to me, it's partly, it's whatever the mandates are and what, what the constraints are that we realistically have, and we always have to start with that, right? Because there's no, those aren't negotiable. And then, what is our real strategic plan, what are our priorities? If we, is, that's what we always get jammed up about, is what is most important, and every time we get to that point, we're like, well, everything's totally important.
Everything's important.
And it's not, it, it might feel that way, but it can't be that way, because otherwise we starve everybody a little bit, and that's not necessarily what we want to be doing. So, so I just think that really being conscious about what are, what, what is the strategic plan, what are the priorities, and, and how much do they cost so that we fund them the way we want to, so that they're really good? And I, I, you know, I don't know what you guys have talked about as a school, about the things that are most important to you, or the things that you know that you're going to need more money in order to support in the way that you need to support it, but I think you need to be really aware of that when we're making a decision.
Jeff, I have a question, is Adam coming to the, our retreat?
He's been invited to the retreat, he's trying to work it out, so that he can make it, but he is still responsible for running another school somewhere, we're working on that.
Kim, do you?
Well, my question is, because I know we have this money that we're gonna put towards working on, but if we know we're gonna, we're gonna have challenges this next budget year, I'm assuming we're not allowed to use any of that money for the next year, which is why we're not?
Because it's in a construction.
I'm guessing, okay. Different pot.
It's a different pot of money.
It's all green, isn't it?
We can spend it up until June thirtieth.
Well, that's our current-
Right, I thought that's what you were talking about, yeah.
Construction fund is what you said.
Yeah, construction.
Okay, um, I will talk with Cindy about why we didn't see anything about the substitute pay rates, and we'll go from there on that one. So, let's move on to action matters, seven point zero, do I have a motion to adopt the CSSU twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen students in personal development calendar?
Professional development.
Second.
What did he say? Personal development. Professional development.
We're going to firstly develop.
PLP, PLP count.
Okay, second?
Second.
Marilyn?
Marilyn, seconded, okay, do we have any discussion? No discussion?
Let me just look at it one more time.
You know, I looked at it, it's quite pretty, it's very pretty.
I think Jean's comment at the CSSU is that we are jamming ourselves up on those snow days.
Well, unfortunately, as long as the, you know, we have a little more flexibility because of the testing schedule and everything, and graduation has to happen anyway, so, but, but the K eights are, you know, they'll be waving, they'll be waving days, they'll be, they'll be asking families to come back Monday.
Right.
Which you know isn't going to happen, and so that means that we're shortchanging the kids a, a day, but unfortunately, as long as we have full day professional development days, we only have a hundred and seventy-five days, and they're all mandated, so it's, our hands are really tied, so.
Agreed.
Okay, so, um, all those in favor of adopting the CSSU twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, the ayes have it, the calendar is adopted. Do I have a motion to the ratification of the support staff contract?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second. Any comments on this? The comment that was brought up during the CSSU is what a wonderful job Cindy did in doing this, and it was a very respectful way in which the contract was negotiated.
And thanks to the people who served on that committee.
Many hours.
Many hours.
Yes, were you on that committee, Lorna? Thank you, Lorna.
You're welcome.
Any comments to the-
Jean was in there at some point, weren't you?
Not that one.
Not that one, I stand.
Any more, uh, comments for the, before I put this to a vote? All those in favor of adopting the support, the ratification of the support staff contract, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, the ayes have it. Uh, next, we are going for the personnel, and I'm wondering, I'm going to do what Jean did, I'm wondering if we're going to do them all at once, or do we want to do them each individual?
I'm final at once.
So when do I, when do I, I mean, I thought it was, couldn't I say something? I just thought it was interesting that you hired somebody with twenty years of experience, I don't think people do that.
Is it Jeff?
Was this before? No, no, it was Andrew.
It's Andrea.
Well, the Jeff, that's another story. Jeff's been here before. But, but I thought with fifty-five applicants, I was actually stunned that you hired somebody with twenty years of experience, because it's pretty high up on the pay scale, and I'm not saying that's a bad thing, I'm saying it's incredibly unusual from my experience with hiring practices these days, so.
Okay, so I guess, I'm asking, can we do them all at once, or do you want to do them individually? All at once, okay. Do I have a motion to nominate the science teachers, design technology teacher, and English teacher? Second?
Approved.
And secondly, do we have approval of hiring, is that correct?
No, I, you got it pretty close, I'm sure.
Yeah, and then we, uh, we are voting now to approve them, everyone in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? The ayes have it, we, you have three new people on your staff?
Excellent.
Okay, and seven point four, a request, request for tuition times two, and I guess this, these are two out-of-district kids who are going to be coming in district or in the school, and we have to approve it, so. Do I have a motion to approve the request to tuition with two students? What, did I say it wrong?
I want to discuss it, but I'm, I'm motioning, yeah.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
I, I, it'd be good to go over how it works now, but my understanding is that we had, have had past discussions about accepting out-of-district students for payment, and, and not just have them try to go through the school choice lottery system, and which they didn't make, I gather. And, and I think that when we've discussed it in the past, and I have been thinking about this, some of the concerns that I have is opening the door to that, and, and have precedence, and are we rewarding families that have the economic means to pay announced tuition, I guess is the official announced tuition? Where is somebody else in the same spot who wouldn't have the money, could not afford to, to come to this wonderful school? And, um, so, so I'm, I'm concerned about that, and I, I don't feel like that is particularly the door and the path, and I don't want to open that door, and I don't want to go down that path of, of having CBU be almost in a private school mood for some, some families. I mean, I don't, I understand why everybody wants to come here, it's, it's a great school, but there are other very good schools in Chittenden County and in the surrounds, and it, it just feels wrong to me. I might be missing something, I need more.
My recollection is the same as yours, I mean, the board had about a three-year conversation on this, but it was probably seven or eight years back, I mean, it was a while ago.
I can't remember that for a minute. It's not even close.
And it was, and it was in a pre-lottery world, it was, it was strictly a matter of somebody saying, well, I like the program, I want to pay my kid to come to CBU, and it took us quite a while, and a lot of conversations to have it, and the board at that, that sat at that time, decided that that was not their values, to allow kids who could afford ten thousand dollars a year could come here, but someone who couldn't afford ten thousand dollars a year couldn't come here. And we were not willing to open the doors and let anybody in, waive all the tuition, which is our other option, right? So, um, so that was the decision of that board, we had, until about a month ago, we had a separate policy from the rest of SCU schools, who were all perfectly okay with that, you know, they thought that, that was fine, and it would help their budgets. And so we had a separate one la- last month, I think the, the wording of it got kind of consolidated, so we all have similar language, and the similar language basically gives the superintendent the right to recommend, because there's, there are certainly situations where we would take somebody, even if they're paying tuition, but it's for a real, a strong personal reason.
Right.
I mean, it could be a tragedy that happened at that other school.
Yeah.
The one that always stuck with me is if a, if a young woman was sexually assaulted by somebody at the school who was still going to school with them, you know?
I know of a case that-
Yeah, that kind of situation, our superintendent may say it would be the best interest in the student to go to a different school. interest in the student to go to a different school. And so we're gonna make that happen. So that's not something the board would want, they wouldn't necessarily need the information to make a decision. We would trust Elaine. So Elaine has been very good, all through the years I was board chair, of sticking by. She understood the will of the board, and she was very, you know, conscious of that's what the board was, even though the policy wasn't quite that strong, it was that was the will of the board. Talking to her at the meeting, our agenda meeting, I, my inta-- correct me if I'm wrong, correct me if I'm wrong, my take is that Elaine feels, she's always been a very public, she's always disagreed with that policy. She thinks everybody should go to the school that they, that's best for them. She's very strongly in favor of children or students finding the best fit for the school, it shouldn't be limited. So she's always, but she's respected our opinion. Now she's just, she feels, and she talked to us about it, that she would like the board to reconsider, given that now we are in a world where there's pretty, kids can choose up to, up to the lottery limit. And that she feels that the environment's changed, the board has certainly turned over, and she would like to test the water with us.
I have some questions for Jeff about these two students. If our, would they have come under a lottery quota if they had applied sooner? I don't know how, or?
No. They both applied for school choice.
Okay, and they didn't make it?
They did not make it.
Okay.
And so they've asked to be tuitioned in. And then my assumption is that they would then join the lottery again next year for school choice, hoping to thus be picked, and then not have to pay tuition next year and beyond. It is a different world now that we have the school choice issue.
Yeah, and I think that's what, if Elaine was here, that's what she'd emphasize. The landscape has changed a bit, and the primary way kids are now getting into the school is through the income-blind system of school choice. There's no requirement on that side that.
Right, they don't have to pay.
And so, you couple that with, that's the main thoroughfare into CDU for out-of-district kids, with the small numbers that are occurring on this side of the equation. And she'd say, I think her words would be, you need to be mindful of exactly the debate that's going on in your mind, but the numbers aren't such that it should be rise to the occasion where these two kids are refused entrance to the school. She's supportive of them coming. But as the numbers switch, we ought to continue to keep an eye on it, I think would be her recommendation to you.
If the numbers switch, if we get large numbers of people trying to leave or come in way beyond lottery restriction now, then.
If the data switches, if next year, instead of two requests, Adam has six requests of people who can afford to come here, and the numbers are such that you're churning away 80% of the school choice applicants because there's no slots left. Say you, I think South Burlington does a little bit of that game, but the slots are so small that it really isn't a reasonable thing to say kids are entering our school. So that's why I say just keep an eye on the data. And if the data begins to look like, to your concern, that the way into CDU is by writing a check, then that's not, that's a reasonably good conversation for this board to have.
Do we know how many people requested CDU, and how many got CDU?
I'd have to check the numbers again. I do know that we take a threshold, we have a threshold of 30 total. So however many were graduating, and I believe it was six. And I think we had nine on the waiting list. So we just had at least 15 applications this year.
So 15, and we took six.
Took six.
I thought we were gonna take up to 20, or no?
30 total.
30.
But they don't graduate every year.
They don't graduate, exactly. So it's a different number every year in terms of how many opens we have.
Right, so 30 total in over four years.
Exactly. So last year.
How many graduate within the fall as a freshman?
Exactly. And to Lorna's point, if that is a real concern about the ability for some families to be able to pay over others, then you can look at raising that threshold of students you allow in. But of course, they don't travel with money, and then we have to have that conversation about the financial impact.
Yeah, I would defer that.
The students that didn't get in through school choice, how are they gonna feel when we vote in other, I don't, I'm just.
I'm sorry?
The students who did not get in by school choice, I would, do they hear about this and that we voted in others and they just paid for it? I mean, that's.
That's exactly what we're doing.
I know. But I just, I wonder how that, what kind of taste that you.
I don't know anything about the process. People who apply for something like this, does the office review their educational records, things aren't talked about earlier tonight as part of the application process?
It's a lottery.
I hope not, if it's a public school.
Are you talking about the lottery? You're talking about the?
I'm talking about this case.
No, Elaine, the policy says that Elaine reviews to make sure that they're in good educational standing and.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
They can't come here if they've been expelled or from a previous school, something pretty broad like that.
And I think she also takes into account the special ed situation. I can't remember what it is, but she's.
When I saw this, I kept reading and rereading, because I was remembering the time that we were adamant about not. So I don't mind re-looking and reevaluating. I was just surprised. I may have missed this conversation if it had happened.
That was the first you've heard of it. We just, we just got it at the agenda setting meeting.
At the chairs meeting.
At the agenda meeting.
The agenda planning meeting.
Yeah, we just got those requests, because once they found out they were not in the lottery, we got the request, and that was a recent development.
And so even though that process is income-blind, these two happen to have enough money to be able to afford to come to school here.
That's right.
That is the assumption.
Yep.
Do you know where they're coming from?
I mean, I do, but I don't know.
Too much personal information.
This may be a problem of, we built it so they will come.
Yeah.
The next problem to have.
They may not be of extreme means, they just may decide, this is where I want my children to go.
Parents are willing to make a commitment.
I will commit and maybe even suffer to go to the school.
Right.
We don't, we won't know.
And the one tricky thing, if you read the policy, it says, it's written about, do you have room? We clearly have room in the school, because we're not at our peak number. But there are certainly also programs where we don't take everybody, right? We have sports programs that have cuts, we have plays that have cuts, we have classes that we can't fit everybody in. And that's just always something that kind of goes into the thinking when we set our, you know, our limits for school choice or anything else. We don't have unlimited resources. So to Bob's point, if it was 10 kids coming in, you know, it would certainly be something that could get uncomfortable in the community. But the question is, is this something, well, you guys know what the question is, just nothing to think.
Is coming here is gonna be one of our lower senses? Is that right?
I think so. It's pretty low. Yeah, I mean, you can't say that we, I mean, we had 100 kids, more kids in this building a couple of years ago, so you can't say there's no seats.
No, capacity-wise, you're five, six years away from even thinking of having an issue with seats.
But when they, you know, cut somebody from the soccer team because of somebody from who lives in another town and can afford to come here, or they cut somebody from an AP class because somebody paid to come here, that's when it gets very tricky for a public school, in my opinion.
Any more discussion on this?
So Jonah, you maybe recommend, are you thinking that should this be defeated tonight, that perhaps the board should have a broader conversation about this again? Or you, when you said, I mean, do you think your students really have time to think about it? I mean, it's probably fair.
I don't know what the timeframe for these students is and when they need to know. And if they've been told the board will review it and approve or disapprove tonight, that makes a difference in my mind. In the best-case scenario, I would have liked to be presented with a new reality, and maybe we would reconsider this. Money is a tough thing, or the ability to pay is a hard one for me.
When they inquired, we told them that we would be bringing it to the board this evening for approval or not.
But if it was tabled for the, because the board wanted to think about it more, I mean, I'm sure these, these students are enrolled in their local, they can be enrolled in their local high school, right? I mean, it's not like we would, it's not like you're applying to a different college and have to choose this month, I guess.
I assume they'll have some high school experience.
Right, exactly. Or we could just.
If we vote to accept them or not, that doesn't set any precedent that we can still discuss that for the next year.
No, not for these two kids. Generally, if you accept someone in at ninth grade.
Right, no, not, these kids would continue.
Right.
I mean, next year voting.
You can start the conversation again next year with the next batch of requests.
So my question to the board is, do you want to vote on these two kids tonight, or do you want to vote on tabling the discussion for our June meeting, after thinking more about it? Yes, Lorna?
In general, I think tabling it and thinking about it and coming back in a month to vote on it makes sense. But in this case, I actually think that it would be very hard for the family to just sort of delay it for another month. And it's better to really, I think, move along, so they can move along with their, their planning and their thoughts about their kids. So I'm in favor of voting tonight.
Anyone else?
Well, let's do this. I mean, if the board wants, I'll make a motion to table, and we can vote on whether or not we want to table or not, okay? I mean, I don't personally think we should table. I think we should vote, but I'll just, if somebody would second it, we can do that, and then we'll know for sure.
Let me ask a good question first. Jeff, you said that they were told that we would, it would be brought to the board tonight. What, from your point of view, would be the danger or not, you know, what would, what would be the dilemma for the family?
And Bob, you can chime in, because I know you've communicated a little bit with them as well. My understanding is, once they got the news that they were not selected in the lottery, they asked, what would happen if we were interested in paying tuition? What would be the expense? What would be the process? We talked about getting superintendent approval, and then taking it to the board. I would be guessing, in terms of what the family reaction would be and what timetable they're looking at. And I don't even know if they've pursued other schools as well. I just know they're interested in CDU, and I looked into the process, was told this was the process.
Yeah, I agree. We purposely didn't embark on an exhaustive interview or search or additional data. The request was, can I give you the check for $13,000, whatever number it is? And can my child attend CDU next year?
And the families have provided a lot of information about the students. I don't think that's, that should be shared here. I don't think that should be pertinent in deciding whether they come or not.
I think it's whether we take tuition students or not. You know, I think Elaine has thought a lot about this. We're at a different time. My only concern would be that, that I haven't seen the different landscape or been presented with it. So that's a little bit uncomfortable. I would, I would, I would vote in support of that, and then really have a thorough conversation, because it could escalate, maybe reevaluate the landscape.
We don't meet again for a regular meeting until.
We have the 23rd of June for a business meeting.
Right, until September. So that obviously is not such a good situation.
Or we could, we could vote at the, we often do business at the retreat.
Yeah, I guess we can, we can do that.
But we're not gonna have more information.
There's no, we're gonna have more information, unless you just want to hear it from Elaine instead of Bob, because there's no more information that I'm aware of. So it's, so do we just want to vote?
Okay. Okay. All those in favor of requests for tuition for two students to come here under tuition for next year, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry. Those not in favor?
No.
No.
Three, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
And we moved to 7.5, the meetings from, the minutes from the meeting of 4, 14, 15. Specifically, we are looking at the Galapagos Island vote, I believe that's what, Lorna?
Right. So if you look at 7.3, that's where the 7.3 came in. In the minutes.
In the minutes, yeah.
April 14. If you can find that, it says, this is for the Galapagos field trip. Motion carried five to zero, but then four of us opposed it. So it should be, it should be five to four.
No, yeah, five to four.
Right. It carried five to four.
We don't usually put names.
We don't put names of people who oppose something. We give a vote. We don't say so-and-so, so-and-so, and so-and-so was for it, and so-and-so, so-and-so.
No, because we're not, we don't fall under the open meeting.
Right.
So.
Strike your names.
Strike the names.
Done.
Okay.
Are you taking care of it?
But you need a five, four, two.
Five, four, two.
Two is absent.
Right.
To designate that it's 11 people.
That there were nine people at the meeting.
There were only nine people at the meeting, and the vote was a tie, and that's why you voted.
Right. And we were, and we were actually down?
Two.
Two.
That's what I'm saying.
No, more than that, because we don't have another Williston rep.
Right. You're short the Williston rep, so you're actually short one of you.
There's one seat vacant.
Who was not here last time?
Marilyn.
Okay, there you go. So we were down two. So there were nine of us present, and it was five.
That's what I'm, five and four.
Yeah, right. Two not present.
Do we have to have a motion on accepting the new minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
You're still doing the math, aren't you?
No, that's okay. I'm not writing, I'm deleting the sentence, and then I'm just putting the count. I'm not.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes with the corrections that have been made?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Excellent. We're on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We are done. We, what? Are you gonna confirm? I'm gonna confirm meetings now. I struck the NACIC CDU agenda meeting off of there. There's no need to see that. The next, the annual retreat is June 1st. Our CDU retreat goes from 8 until 1:00 in the afternoon. And the CSSU retreat goes from 12 to 4:00, somewhere there's a lunch in there.
Where's the Comfort Suites?
What does it say?
Same place as last year.
Now Comfort Suites?
Yes, there's four hotels around the restaurant. It's the one with the ballroom.
Yeah, we go up to the.
Looks west.
Right. And the last thing that I would like to confirm is our business meeting on June 23rd at 5:30 here at CDU. And we have graduation June 12. And graduation is June 12. The bread challenge is this Friday, if you so move to go.
One o'clock.
And then the faculty meeting, on that date that I get.
Tuesday or Thursday.
Tuesday or Thursday, correct.
And really, I can't say enough, you really should try to come to the CSSU board meeting, because I think the CSSU retreat, if you can, because I think it's gonna be an interesting conversation about how we move forward on governance.
Thank you, everyone. Oh, move to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.